All right, I've got thumbs up from our IT director there. We are going to call this meeting of the work session, City Startable, September 13th, in preparation for our meeting on September the 17th to order. And what we will do first is, well, let me say a couple of things. We have the citywide tailgate going, well, actually it's not going on any longer, is it? It's just now shutting down. We had a really nice turnout downtown, so the citywide tailgate, plan for it next year. If you didn't come to it this year, it is, it's always a great event. The city participates and all the businesses downtown tend to participate. But I also wanted to make the announcement that we got the news yesterday that our lawsuit has settled. And so the Supreme Court has denied cert as it relates to the lawsuit on our zoning matter with the industrial park, the North Star Industrial Park. So we are proceeding aggressively to market it in ways that we can. And we're all very, very excited about that, that that chapter has closed and we can now move into making the absolute most use of that space that we possibly can. So those were both good things that were, that occurred this week and I wanted to share them. So what we, what we're going to be doing today is we've got an update on the parks projects that Mr. Logan gave us, I think a couple of months ago. And he was, since we were talking parks today, I was going to let him give us an up-to-date, up-to-date as of right now. And so I'm going to turn it over to Gary Logan and I'll let you go through that and then we'll go back to our new project.
Sure. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Been, been busy since we talked last and there's been several updates, changes, removals to this capital project list just as, you know, different things happen. But I'll just run this right through it. As far as what we have on the calendar for basically now through next September, and I guess I should probably preface this by saying everything on here, if it's not already under, already underway, is written definitely in pencil, you know, as, as, you know, updates come through, as we get grants, as we've seen with the J. O. King Park walking track, and we're able to do things a little bit quicker than originally scheduled. So everything on here for sure, especially on the right side of this and going forward is definitely in pencil, but this is, this is kind of where we want to be with things. So kind of just keep that in mind. So as you can see, we started to cross some things off. While the first one on your top left, resurfaced McKee basketball and tennis, those are not, the resurfacing for the McKee Park basketball courts is completed. The resurfacing for the J. O. King Park basketball courts, if I'm not mistaken, was completed about an hour ago. I mean, he called me. I'll have to run over there and double check, but I believe that's almost completed, if not, if not done. And then they are going to start next week on resurfacing the McKee tennis courts. And it will resurface three of the four courts that are there. The fourth court is being converted into four pickleball courts. We have a very active pickleball group and they're very excited to get that. Some, some permanent courts will be one of the first in the state to have permanent outdoor pickleball courts.
And those resurfaces look great, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we're pleased. It's taking a little bit longer as, as things go with construction, but yes, we're definitely pleased with the finished product that we've seen so far. The J. O. King Park walking track was actually a year two project, but we were fortunate enough to get here a while back. Remember, we got the Christopher and Dana Reid Foundation grant, which gave us $25,000 towards that project and would have completed that along with some sidewalks. But if y'all remember, we did have some, some subsurface issues and some delays with that project. So that actually ended up being about a $33,000 total project, $25,000 from the grant, and we just absorbed the rest. But that has been completed as well and we host a ribbon cutting next week, which we'll meet you on Tuesday night.
Well, go ahead and mention.
Oh, sure. So 4:00 PM on Wednesday, September 18th, at the J. O. King Park walking track, we will do a ribbon cutting, not only for that, but we're also going to, you know, allow Edward Kemp and others to discuss the recent sidewalk improvements. So it's kind of an all-encompassing ribbon cutting for the area for some much-needed improvement. So we're excited about that. Again, next Wednesday, September 18th, 4:00 PM, at the J. O. King Park walking track. We'll meet the building, the parking lot right there by the J. O. King Center. The next three you'll see in italics because they're not completed, but they are in design. And you'll actually get the update from LPK Architects on Tuesday night. That's on the, the agenda for this coming Tuesday, for them to do an update on the designs and consider those. So those are, those are in design, not completed, obviously. And then on the right, you'll see the things that we want to do. And you will likely notice one thing that's on here that kind of sticks out a little bit before, and that's a pool renovation. So again, if I could describe that one at all, I would say that's the lightest pencil there is right now, but as far as items that are on here. But what's happened is we have some plumbing issues, pretty serious plumbing issues at the Moncrey Park Pool that we have to get fixed, have to get fixed, no matter what we did. But we're going to take the opportunity to work with LPK, actually again, on the agenda for this Tuesday, if approved, we'll update their, the scope to, to add the Moncrey Park Pool to that. And they'll be here to answer any questions related to that. But they're already working on the designs for Moncrey Pavilion, so we're going to allow them to, proposing to allow them to just add the pool as part of their scope. We got some relatively good news with the pool in that the shell and the filtration system is actually in relatively good shape. And for a 1960's era pool, you know, that's, that's really, really good news. So we're focusing, focusing on potentially new decking and new pool house. We will probably look to update the filtration system. And again, we're working through all that about what we could do. But LPK, they will add in the scope to redo the pool house, redo the pool deck. The filtration system is more of a separate, kind of a specific technical matter with pool companies and we're, we're working through that separately. But that is on there that we're, we're looking to potentially have to factor that into our plans this year. The McKee Park playground is the next playground unit scheduled to be replaced. It's certainly old. It's, it's 20-plus years for sure. I know because I dug the real park minutes and found exactly how it was. It was a 1998 approval. So definitely an old unit. That's the next one scheduled to be replaced. And what we're looking to do, still, still in the research phase, is looking to replace that with what I would call a wheelchair accessible, inclusive unit. And we're working through a lot of potential ways to do that, working with TK Martin Center, obviously looking at grants that we could apply for. There's various grants that would help kind of supplement this project. But to do a more inclusive wheelchair accessible unit, that is a larger than normal, but if you know McKee Park Playground, that is a very, very large playground unit. But we actually had an interesting kind of unintentional site visit with the company earlier this week. McKee Park has three playground units. There's one very, very large unit in the center, a smaller unit closer to the pavilion, and another small unit on the north side that was added, I think, five or six years ago. What we could do potentially is replace this McKee Park playground and that newer unit, take it and move it to another park, i.e. a Josie Park, or add it to another, another park where we need a unit, because that unit is going to be in good condition for many more, we expect, many years. So that was just a thought that was thrown out there so we didn't have any issues with trying to match playground units. And then you'll see park access and security. That's been on here. We're going to, we're working with IT to look at cameras at some high, continue to add cameras in, in park and public areas. So that's, that's still a work in progress about what we could do there. And then gates for parks has been something we've been looking at and for not, you know, just looking at how many parks we could do. McKee, if we wanted to try to do one at J. O. King or not, Moncrey, you know, areas that you could potentially, you know, close access and would be functional. There's not, doesn't work everywhere. There's some parks that are just wide open and a gate really doesn't do much, but we're looking at that. And then I've added just again, another item in pencil, because we were not able to do the J. O. King Park sidewalk with the Christopher and Dana Reid Foundation grant, we would like to go in and do that to connect the lower pavilion to the building and update the sidewalk that's out in front of the building. So that's just, it, put that in there as a placeholder, something that we, we were hoping to do along with this grant, but because of the subservice failure and the update that happened, we, we had to kind of push that. So that's, that's what we're looking at year one, so things you're more likely to see over the next year or so. Any questions on that before I go into just year two?
Mike? No? Go ahead and.
Okay. Year two. Originally on year one, we had a placeholder for some work at George Evans. We've kind of moved that and combined that with a previous item to, we're going to look at potentially covering the basketball court at George Evans, potentially adding a multi, multi-purpose room and removing the current building. Again, everything in pencil. Once we got to that point or before we obviously made any decisions about that, we would host a series of meetings and make sure all stakeholders are aware and, and what might be the best fit. I think there's some potential with George Evans Park. And it's just the functionality of that park and how the, the space is utilized right now is maybe not the best that it could be. So, but I do think we have an opportunity to make that a highlight park. It's a park that has access from Spring Street, so it's very high visible, highly visible. But from the Lesby Street, you're hard pressed even though the park's there. So there, there's some opportunity there and we hope to move into that obviously year two. So we'll have some time between now and then.
And your demographics have changed around there for the studies that you do. So I think that's relevant to what we, what we do. That needs to inform our future with that park.
It is. Whenever this, this park was put in, I would venture to say that the average age in the timid walk has probably decreased by 10-plus years, just the median age of that area. So we've got the park metrics, park metric information to back that up. I believe median age is probably 23, 24, if I'm not mistaken, for that, for that park. So we have in here placeholder to replace the Travis Outlaw Center roof. We have some leaking that goes on during the wintertime, nothing that we haven't been able to work through, just again, something that, that we'll need to, need to be thinking about. The addition of this Josie Park playground, which again, based on my meeting earlier this week, we may be able to, to meet that another way, potentially using that unit that's at McKee, but we'll see, but it's still in there. Josie Park playground does need to, you know, does need something, we agree, and do want to take the opportunity to mention it right now. Send it via email, but just want to kind of say it publicly. The, the community garden that is currently there was formerly a volunteer group that kind of managed that community garden. That group has, has not done, is not doing that anymore. The community garden is overgrown and what we plan to do, would like to do, is just remove that and focus our efforts on a, a community public garden at J. O. King Park. The J. O. King Center has already got some small plots that they're working through behind that small building and we would love to help them and kind of, if there's going to be a spot for some, some public garden and public produce and things like that, we believe that's, that's a better use of efforts and to just do away with the one that's currently at Josie Park.
Before we go away from Josie Park, if you were able to relocate that playground equipment from McKee to Josie, that doesn't mean that there's not cost involved. It probably just drops from 30 to 10?
Possibly just factor that into the McKee Park replacement as part of the, as part of the RFP.
Okay. But there would be some cost in moving.
Potentially, potentially. And then for year two, we're up, this is something that's been added relatively recently. We have been looking at some potential additions to the J. O. King Park splash pad. The water bucket feature that was new this year was incredibly popular. We love it. That splash pad's getting a lot of use, it's our only splash pad. So we've looked at some various other items we could add and aspects we could add. So we're, we're trying to work through factoring that into year two of this plan. And you see that jail, the park, the lights for the J. O. King Park football field currently not planning to do anything as far as the, not through capital project funds, but potentially through, through municipal utilities there. Any questions on year two? Year three, definitely again, very, very, very light pencil, but have some, have had some very, very brief discussions about skate parks since, because we've had several individuals from the public actually come to meet and discuss that. And there's, there's, skate park to me is kind of like, kind of like a new pool. So it's something that every now and then it'll rear up and there'll be a lot of call for it in a short time, a lot of, some public comments. So we've done a little bit of homework there. There's, there's absolutely grants available ranging, you know, from $25,000 all the way up to even, even larger than that. And I think really with a skate park, you really need to, need to plant it in a, in a very, very proper location. And that would be, you know, something obviously to figure out between now and then. But that's on there, something that we would love to try to do, but again, this is year three. And I've also put in a line item for Trail Connectivity Project. We actually tried to make this work through the LWCF grant process, the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks this year. We're not successful in getting that grant, but we obviously wanted to devote funds towards trails and greenways and connectivity. So that's, that's really why that's in there. And then you see an unfunded list, just really wish list items. The Academy Road Park, which is not a, really a park we have currently, but it is some city-owned property. And we've obviously had call for, for mark for our park property to extend towards the South Montgomery area. So it's city property and, and you know, just to, just to kind of get that update and potentially get a, a park there, that's kind of where we're at. And then just the other category, just really, really an unknown right now, but at least want to make sure we factor it in is contributing to a restroom facility at the high school tennis courts, per the use agreement we have.
Okay.
And then the, any question on year three?
Four. And then this is just a fun one. Just, I like to look at it this way, just kind of see how things are spread out, how each year is spread out. So just use that as, as you will or really that's, that's it?
Okay.
Any questions?
All right. Well, it's, and it is an update from what you did before and I appreciate you being welcome and kind of retool it to reflect what's going on right now and what we're still looking at for, for the future. So any questions of Gary?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment.
Okay.
Gary, thank you for updating us. I think one of the things that I would like to see happen this year at, at the Sportsplex, and I think it goes along with, call it security under that line item, but since the addition of the, the no left turn lane and off of Lynn Lane into the overflow parking lot, what we're seeing is a lot of vehicles as they pull into the Sportsplex, they're just taking off, off-road and they're just cutting across that field. So I think we have, right now, there's no controlled access of where you can see where people are clearly driving up the hill and into that. I just think we have a potential safety issue there with not controlling that access and still with people being able to pull anywhere from the parking lot and parking underneath those trees. So either some temporary fix or something that may be a more, a true fence, be able to separate that out. I think we need to get some control over that before somebody gets inadvertently hurt. Because people are, from just witnessing myself out there, people, when they cut on that grass, they are, they're going too fast. And if we know where the, the proposed entry is off of that, you know, maybe we can go ahead and begin to formalize that a little bit and start getting people where we want them to be able to pull in, into that overflow lot. But just wanted to bring that up. I do think that's an issue that we need to, that we need to get our arms around. And I would say sooner rather than later before, before something negative occurs.
Well, we talked about just putting fence pieces in between the trees, just as, as blocking opportunities there, so.
I think there's a number of potential solutions and that, and that's one. I just think right now is we don't have any control, they're just able to pull wherever they want. We need to, I would say that the Parks Department needs to get control of that before it becomes an issue. Not to mention the, it's one thing that the tree's dying, which I'm.
Right. No, no, absolutely.
But I'm equally concerned or more concerning is little Bobby or Billy getting run over.
Yeah. Well, and I'm brokenhearted that the trees along Lynn Lane are all dying.
Yeah.
I hate that.
That's true.
Root scorch, leaf scorch, something like that. Yeah, it's just breaking my heart. It's a beautiful.
Quick note on that, because we did get quotas for that and we actually got quoted just so we would know fencing that would extend from the, the main Sportsplex, that wall, the Sportsplex wall, extend from there all the way around to, around the entire overflow. And we obviously know we'd have to factor in any potential entrance to that. But then also going back all the way around for the soccer fields, because we do have complaints about individuals on a busy night pulling out there onto the soccer field to try to exit quicker. And I believe that project was somewhere in the 20,000 or so range for fencing for all of that. So I would completely fence in the soccer parking lot, basically.
Yeah, I just think that that's something that we should, that you all need to consider and figure out, you know, what we, what we need to do.
Well, I've been wanting us to gate access to our, after hours, gate access to our parks anyway, so that we don't have a lot of activity back there in, in the dark, so.
Control the vehicles.
Yeah. Well, no, that's absolutely correct, you know, but if you can keep the cars from getting back up in there, then that will reduce some of it for sure. Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. If there are no, no other discussion on what we've currently got, let's talk about what we're going to have. Dean, you want to, I'm just going to let you go with it. You've got, you have put in front of us a big picture and then we have each one a smaller rendering.
Yeah, we've got it on the screen, it's a little bit hard to see, so I brought this big picture, I probably should point to this a lot, it might be easier if they're.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
We as a design team, we've been, continues meeting with the city. As a member of our design team, never in a room, everybody's here today, so see if we have any questions for us. But more just kind of review some of the items that have changed from the master plan from a couple of years ago when we got that, that done. The main item, the one just that we decided, while we got into more discussion, the idea of amenities in the park seemed to be a big draw for tournament level facilities. And we had very minimal, so we decided, made that decision to put in more amenities so we can get more, and choose out about, about this particular park for tournaments. So the one, a couple of things that we did change in all of the kind of park, we had a, a, what we were referring to as a championship field. And the idea with there, we were going to make maybe all synthetic and we were going to do some special seating. The more we looked at other facilities and the more we had a discussion amongst the design team, we felt that it would be better for us maybe to, if we want to have a championship field, it'd be one of the fields in the quad. Maybe we will just beef up one of the fields there to be a little bit special for a championship game and utilize that space for amenities. And in this case, we did have, we're going to build a T-ball area. And that T-ball area could also be used for warm-up for our tournaments when our tournament teams are in here. We've got a great place for them to warm up, there's a safe location. So that is kind of one of the, the major changes, which I've got a big location up here showing that, that area. It's still, it is still our main focus of the complex as far as, as people enter, the teams enter, our spectators enter, the wood is still coming into our main plaza area. And that's where the amenity areas will be. And when I say amenities, we're talking about a playground, we're talking about maybe a gaming area, we've talked about even a mister area, we might have some bubbles. There's going to be tent space for the teams to set up so they can get out of the heat. So it's going to be a really a nice, active area. From that, it spins off going to the different quads to play your games. Let's see, we have gone in and we've got all the fields now as we're looking for the target market for the youth baseball and the girls softball. And the 225 field seems to be that magic field that we can play back and forth. And so we've got everything designed now with that level field. We are going to have a few fields that could be expanded to a different length in the future if we decide that's what we want to do in the future. Phase one, which is on the bigger picture here, and I know y'all have it, is not the yaw. The yaw is showing what's going to be in future phases. So you can see everything back up in that area and grading is going to be in the phase one, which includes, got 10 225-foot fields. We're going to have two additional fields, 12, 11 and 12 on that fourth quad is an add, as an add-alternate. So if our bid prices come back in, we're going to pick up another two fields in the process. We've got, in this design, almost 1,200 parking spaces. That may change a little bit when we get into final design, final grading. We're going to have a good bit of parking. We're going to have our main entry plaza that will have restrooms, it'll have offices, it'll have the main concession. That's still all in our main plaza area. We still have our Koo Papa Bell Plaza and we enter the whole complex, that's in phase one. The amenities will be in phase one, the T-ball area and warm-up area will be in phase one, course grading, drainage, utilities, park road, water sewer, your main infrastructure utilities. And of course, we'll have entry signage and directional signage all as part of the phase one package. The, let's see if I mentioned one. One other item we did make some alterations, we have decided we, we moved the park road slightly, it was farther up into the complex, we've moved it down as close to the property line as possible. That way, any of our activities will be on the outside of the park road. We won't have any activities on the inside loop, just from the standpoint of people not having to cross the park road for anything. So that's kind of.
And maintenance building, too? Wasn't that?
We did move the maintenance building, which was on the other side of the road. So we've moved the maintenance building to a new location and it's going to be kind of really accessed off above the Blueville here. So it's going to be kind of a, little bit more out of the way, which is kind of nice because it's not, you know, maintenance area's not the greatest thing for a park, so there's no reason for us to have that, our main entrance coming in. Let's see, things in our, what we were referring to is the Hall of Fame Plaza area, our main plaza area, which is here, we still thought it'd be nice to, it'd be, the amenities would be that, but also we'll have shade structures. We thought that'd be a great place to do, still do our recognition of, of baseball players and softball players from, we could do it from Mississippi State, we could do it from the city, we thought maybe teams, there's a way to maybe do a little history type of plaza area in that location also. The typical quad, I'll just talk about it quick, is in this, coming down here. This is just typically what we're seeing right now. It will have a restroom. We will not have a permanent concession there. What we're thinking we're going to have is, we're going to have a place for food trucks. We're going to have also what I refer to as concession stations. There'll be stations where we can bring the concessions out to these quad areas. We're finding that food trucks seem to be this real draw these days. And so why build this expensive concession area? Plus the food trucks can be used for, you could just rent that space and make a little money off of the rental, or at some point you may want to own your own food truck and then use it for other activities around the city. So we can just kind of work with that. We'll have a food truck area, shade structures, we want to have a raised, so maybe some raised seating in a lot of these fields and.
And that's not showing on here, would you normally, am I just not understanding what I'm seeing? Is that certainly possible?
Well, what we're, what we're showing now is this large paved area.
All right. So it's not on there?
No, to the detail of where the food truck is going to be, we're still going to be working that as we.
Well, obviously the seating and the shade structure.
The shade structure will be, well, it'll be in this location here.
Right. So, but you're not showing, is all I'm saying?
We're not showing all those at this point.
Okay. That's good.
Since we don't have the detail of exactly the size, shape, color.
Okay. That's fine. Just making sure I wasn't overlooking something as I was watching. I was looking at this.
That is general overview of our, what we were looking at phase one to be. We're still looking at an early package, maybe to get the grading and so maybe some of the utility. of the utilities. We'll look at our civil engineers, see if we can get some utilities maybe included in that. We are thinking our estimate for this phase one is in the $18 million range. Where that number comes from is we took the, the cost estimate from the master plan phase that we had a construction estimator due for, and we've added 20% to those numbers to get to this 18. So we'll make sure we had a buffer built into that.
That's a big
Costs have gone up quite a bit since that time, is what, two years ago? So we've, so we want to make sure we have that covered. If, we'll get those other two fields, if our costs come in under overestimated. That is where that number comes from. Timeline, to get the early package, grading package out, and the reason we're talking that route, it does a couple of things. It speeds up the construction process to get, start getting this bulk dirt work, maybe some of the utilities done on the front end. While that work's being done, we could be finalizing the design on the fields, the complex, the buildings, the rest of the park while that work is being done. It also allows us an opportunity to bid that type of work to the contractors that do that kind of work. And that's a way to save a general contractor's markup, who would be hiring a dirt, civil type of contractor. So it's a way to save money and keep speeding up our, our timeline on our, on our project. So we're looking at about two months' worth of design time, two months' worth of approval from state and city on all of the earthwork and erosion control requirements that we have to go through.
It's MDEQ and who else? EPA? Both?
It'll be MDEQ. We've already taken care of the, the wetland side of things, so that if it triggers the letter, which we probably will, referring to soils and area that are wet, we can say we've done that part, we'll check that box.
Okay.
So mostly MDEQ, and then that's gonna happen day one.
Okay.
And then the, obviously the city requirements for stormwater and erosion control.
Okay.
Great, nothing. And we believe we got about six months' work of grading construction. We are gonna be going through part of our winter months, which is gonna slow some things down. But we think we had about six months' work of that. But while that work is going on, we're finalizing the rest of the construction documents to come back. And that's about four more months, but that's done while the grading is going on. So it's not an additional four months. It's doing, done while that work is going on. Did get design time, we think it's a couple of months worth of approval. And we think this is about 12 months. It's about a year construction project once we get the general contractors to start building our fields, our parking, everything. We're estimating, we're looking at spring, maybe early summer 2021 to get, get the project open.
Okay. And the, the whole, the group of folks who are here that are supporting this, you want to go through that, just so that you can say it and I'm not saying it?
Don't worry.
Neil Schaefer?
Our design team, don't over introduce yourself, man, that's the best thing to do.
So my name's Saunders James, with Neil Schaefer. We handle all the, all civil site work, stormwater, erosion control, and utility work.
And Saunders had done the, the work through COCITA with clearing and grubbing for the, the property to this point. So he, he's familiar with the area. Sorry.
And I'm Justin Zoner with Schaefer Zoner Zoner. We're, we'll be responsible for all the vertical construction, zone, buildings, concession stands, et cetera.
Absolutely. Dave? David Duquella, I'm with DD Consulting. I'll be a sub underneath Neil Schaefer, assisting with various ways from a construction standpoint to save dollars on this project, as well as working with the city on some aspects of getting the facility operational, concession contracts, looking at sponsorship, marketing, and those types of aspects of a project, so that when you have it and you're done, you're ready to operate.
And David, since you're not local, would you just give just a little bit of your background to the board? I know you've, I know it's probably in the, in the E-Packet or in our paperwork, but...
I am retired with the City of Gulfport. I did 28 years with the City of Gulfport. We designed and developed the Gulfport Sports, Sportsplex back in 1990. It was an 80, excuse me, an $8 million project. In turn, we leased property to the water park down there, which was another nine, $10 million project. As we developed, we started operating tournament facilities and tournament operations. We were bringing in clothes, the last number I had when I retired, we were right around 2,400 teams a year that we were bringing into the City of Gulfport. Economic impact was somewhere between 12 and 15 million dollars a year. Before I retired, we did an expansion to that project. We have a, currently it's a nine and 615 field softball, baseball complex, and a six-field soccer, multi-purpose field complex. In addition to that, I was responsible for the construction of the, after Katrina, we redid Jones Park in the Marina. It was a $40 million project. I was the city liaison, working with the contractors, with the architects, with the engineers to get that project working. So for my 28 years, I've spent about 18 to 20 of them doing major construction projects and putting the city, helping put the City of Gulfport back together after Katrina. So looking forward to this. It's a great opportunity for the city of Starple, and y'all are gonna have a premier complex when this is done.
Y'all, I kind of had this today, that early in our process, when we talked about getting our construction documents, go through the construction process, we talked about the possibility of breaking this up into some multiple different types of bids, not to go through just one general contractor bid, because it saves money. And it gives us an opportunity to bid directly to, say, electrical contractor or to a supplier for sports lighting, that sort of, I, we talked about that. And then we got introduced to David, and it's what he had been doing on a lot of the projects. The project, we have done projects just like that, but the cities have had to hire someone to do that. It doesn't, it's a very time-consuming element. Several of our bigger projects, that's what we did, and the city has. So we kind of came along David, and he's already made some tremendous suggestions on how we can save some dollars on this project as we move forward. So that's gonna help us, they can add more facilities.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone on the board? These guys will be back Tuesday night. So anyone have any questions at this point in time? Anyone see anything about it that, that causes any element of, why did you do that? Or the 225? Yes, sir.
How are we gonna irrigate the T-ball? We're gonna have a separate well that's designated for this park? Are we gonna, how are we gonna, how are we gonna irrigate this complex? As far as construction part, are we gonna go with the water? How are we gonna irrigate it all?
I handle that one. I think, obviously, yeah. From irrigation of the, because it's all gonna be synthetic turf, most likely. So the other areas, we'll run, it's probably too early to determine that. Obviously, we wouldn't want to run it on domestic, we don't have to. So a well is act as an option. That'll be determined during the design phase, so.
Saunders, everything that, even outfields are all synthetic turf? It's, it's a complete, all outfields?
We're leaning, because of some of the benefits that David has already brought to the table, we feel like that is now on the table as an option. I can't speak for the entire team or for the city, but that would be the goal, is to turn over an all synthetic project, other than the detention areas. And so there's probably a balance in there, where a well makes sense if you're watering X, but it doesn't make sense if you're watering Y, so.
Right. Either one whole thing, or one whole thing, part of one.
Correct. But we don't, we don't know. But it is a, I heard you, actually, we talked about it at the last meeting, and that'll continue to be a discussion.
Yeah, we have done well irrigation on projects like this.
The only other question I had was the future phase, part of that's right in the middle, front center. I guess we'll maintain that one, until this is developed with that.
That will, what, maintain is a green space. And we thought it'd be a great place for a warm-up or even practice until that day comes.
And, and I'll, again, talk kind of, so we tell the whole picture here, to get the site plan approved, for the city to really understand what our impacts are from a grading and drainage and stormwater aspect, all of that's gonna have to be graded and finished. Everybody's gotta know where the water's going, so that's not gonna be just an area that we don't touch. It'll be an area that we grade and, and finish in a way that can be maintained.
Well, one of the things I had asked them to do is everything we look at, when we do a detention area, let's look and see if we can make it do dual purpose. I mean, if it just doesn't make any sense, then certainly not. But if we've got a detention area that can serve as a ball field or a, a practice area or something while it's serving a detention, then let's at least explore those opportunities, so.
We've got one in a perfect shape that we could do some, some, some activity training, even other, but just practice. We're already showing five different detention basins at this point, but we don't know if that's what we're gonna wind up with.
Yeah. So we're talking earlier about our dirt work. We don't know that number yet, probably know that in the next two weeks. We anticipate having some combination of some retention ponds, which will have water standing and fountains, and then a mixture of that with the dry detention pond, which we would hope we could drain it in such a way that it could be used in dry conditions and, and move the wet areas to one edge, so that it's easily maintained.
Okay. All right. Anything? Anyone else? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you all for being here today, and we look forward to seeing you on, on Tuesday. Y'all are on the agenda for consideration of the plan moving forward. And now we can take up the agenda as we, as we do in our work session. So we have four sets of minutes. Chris, those are, and, and if anyone wants to make sure, I'm not gonna propose anything that I know is not gonna be a consent item, but if there's any issues with any of these minutes. Chris, anything from your perspective on any of the minutes?
Lisa tells me she's made the final corrections to September 3rd, so I think we're good.
Okay. Anyone have any issues about consent on all these agendas, on all these minutes? I'm sorry.
I said, you put them on that, I put them on the call, I see, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, we can go consent, assuming no other, no other concerns. And anything that anybody knows now that they wish to make an announcement about, we can put it on the agenda, or we can just hold it until we get a chance to talk about it at the, at the board meeting. I've got introduction to make, and then an announcement or, and that, on your agenda, if you will look, that has to be changed. It says October the 17th, but it's October the 22nd. So that's a mis, misprint on the, on the number. So the date for October the 22nd. But I'll be making those announcements. I wanted them to get on the agenda, so that if somebody wanted to come back and reference what those dates were, they would be also in a written format, so. We have a public appearance. Amy Counterman is asked to do a, keep Starple Beautiful update. And while I'm thinking about it, guys, we had some great news. And I had, I was rudely going through my emails to make sure I got the language right. Mr. Havlin put the city in for awards, and we've got two 2019 Great Places in Mississippi Great, Great Neighborhood Award for the Adelaide neighborhood. Where did Mr. Saunders go? Well, anyway, the Adelaide neighborhood, and then another one for Russell Street, which is a big deal. It's really, it's one of those things where we get recognized as a place where people want to be and where we are placed. I was talking about the Adelaide.
Yeah, yeah. And Russell Street.
Yeah. And I just think that's wonderful. So I wanted to, I wanted to talk about that and get the right language.
I want to, I want to put a plug in for the city. When, when that came up, Daniel and Emily did a really good job with that. And the way they presented it was, we as city employees want to make sure Starple's showing how great we are, and you guys should be proud of that. They did a really good job.
Yeah. Very proud of it. And Daniel, we'll let him go travel to accept that award, because he did, he did yeoman's work on that, so.
That's through the Mississippi chapter of the American Planning Association.
Yes. That's a statement, not a question, right? Thank you. Because I'm going, well, I think so, maybe. Okay. Excellent. But anyway, I just think that's wonderful, and that's another tribute and highlight. You know, we were the best place to live in Mississippi last year, and this is another piece of how we keep that designation and how we keep that, that field. So I'm, I'm really excited. And I, and I, kudos to Daniel and to Emily for, for doing that, so. Okay, we've got a public hearing on the C2 commercial zone property at Lynn Lane in South Montgomery. And that's the public hearing and, and that consideration. Simon, is there anything about that that you wish to say? Nothing special about it? It's, okay. All right. That's fine. It would just be a public hearing consideration. Thank you. And then public hearing consideration of Brookville Garden Apartment, which, that is the one that burned about, I think, three years ago, and we have been unable to get it either torn down or totally redone, rebuilt. And so it is time for it to be designated as a public menace, and so that the owners will, will do something with it. So, you know, we are, we are well overdoing that, in my opinion. So that's what that's about.
David?
Yes, sir.
On this public hearing, so the public hearing, additional use of the residential, change residential from C2, how big a parcel is that? Is that gonna be a multifamily thing, is that what it's not?
Do you know how big a parcel is? Parcel, like?
I don't, I want to say, I don't remember the size of the parcels, but what's being proposed is eight dwelling units, single family detached, but as a condominium, is that correct? As a condominium?
A unit condominium.
I want to say it's a couple acres, or a little over an acre, maybe?
Yes, probably, and around, a little over one acre.
It's adjacent directly to the west of Maison de Ville.
I just didn't know, I want to know, 20, no 20 acre, but I guess, any area, I want to, it's all this, all my stuff, I want to get on that.
It is inside that, sort of in between that and the entry for that other project going off to Lynn Lane, going onto Lynn Lane. And then we have the Starple Housing Authority Board. I was not on the agenda last time. It is on the agenda this time, despite the fact Ms. Ward says she cannot be here. She was unable to be at the last meeting, and she's unable to be at this meeting, but we need to fill this position. So I went ahead and put it on, on the agenda, and if the board wants to pull it back off again, you certainly can do that, but I think it's, I think it's important that you go ahead and get on, on the agenda. Yes, sir.
Let me say something to that. On these, on these, the advisor boards, yeah, why do we have interviews when a person is reapplying back to be back on the board? Why do we have interviews?
Well, I would, okay, I can answer that, and that's from my personal standpoint, is if, if you have someone who wishes to be on the board, and, and you've got this person here who's been there for a while, but you've got someone who wants to serve, I think it's reasonable for us to look at both parties. So if this had just been one person, then there would have been, you know, nothing to talk about. But you had a second person who wanted to be on the board, and so I think it's appropriate for us to consider them when they, you know, when they're saying, I'd, I'd like to be considered for it. So that's the reason.
I don't see no sense in pulling it off. She ain't made that meeting, she don't want to make that meeting, so why we put it up? We're just gonna leave it on there. I mean, you're saying?
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm leaving it on there. I'm just saying if the board as a whole on Tuesday wants, decides to do otherwise, but that's why it's on there. Okay. All right. So. And then discussion and consideration of the contract, which is what we, what we just witnessed here. So there'll be a presentation again on Tuesday, similar to tonight, with the opportunity for people to ask questions after they've had a chance to see the E-Packet and, and look at the presentation again, so. All right. Under board business, we've got the salary adjustments, and that obviously will, will tie into the millage, and the millage is on there, as is the budget. So all three of these kind of, kind of go together. But I thought we had, at the work session regarding the budget, I thought we had a, sort of a consensus on the increase in the salary data. So, you know, I can put it any way it is, or Lisa can, can queue it up in a different is or Lisa can, can queue it up in a different format, but that was the one thing I thought we did agree on through the work session, so.
David, would you re-arrange it? This is the, we're backs to the wall on this next meeting. We don't have a wiggle room. This is the last day and we have to approve our budget.
Yes.
So we get the board any side, we got to start wrangling and changing stuff, okay, because we're going to be, before we leave that meeting Tuesday night, we got a budget.
And we will have four votes, one way or the other, for a millage of whatever it is, somewhere between 1.5 and what we've currently got, increase of 1.5 and what we've currently got. And again, if I circle back to Mr. Carver had suggested he was willing to vote for a .64, I believe it was, so somewhere in between all of those, you know, but that will be discussion for, for the board. So all three of these items will remain, obviously, now there's no consent associated with them, but that's what they are.
So if we can't reach consensus on the millage rate, it's the 1.5, we start peeling stuff out of here, right? Do we have to, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to pick what we'll be pulling out.
Well, Lisa, Lisa is, I asked her if she was prepared for a 1.5, for a .64 and for a, as existing. And she says she is prepared. So, okay. So those three items will be, will be taken up on Tuesday. Then we have a resolution approving an interlocal and supporting the Garen project. And Chris, this is our last Garen resolution, would that be accurate?
It's the last step in the process and what it does is this is the document that governs Oktibah County and Starkville's relationship on this, how the county will pay funds into the city and then the city will pay off the bonds. And it just talks about the inner workings of how that's going to flow.
Okay. And that's not something we can take up at the same time we took those others up? Is it truly a step?
Could have, it wasn't presented to us at that time.
It wasn't presented to us, okay, all right. Well, then that's, that's a good, good to know.
Although somebody asked for it to be presented, it didn't make it there.
I see, okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
It is what it is, so we'll take that up as well. Okay, and then we have the resolution declaring the intent of the mayor and the board to issue the general obligation improvement bonds, which are related to the park as well. This is, this is the 25, 25 million in the 30 years. And how many more of those?
Well, remember, this is the re-rack. This is the redo.
Oh, that's right, because we, because it didn't get published.
That's right. So this is, the only thing that changes board on this is that the notice did not run in the Starkville Daily News last week, as it should have, and so we've had to bring it back. And so this document will be absolutely identical to last meeting's document except two things. Number one, it'll have the return date on October 15th rather than October 1st. And number two, it'll have different publication dates at the end. Everything else is identical.
And I ask this, and I don't know if anybody's researching or not, but as, as we have changed to accepting things like social media and emails and that sort of thing, is there anything out there that says that we don't have to continue to publish in a newspaper? Can we, can an online thing, because if we can catch something online with the online newspaper or do something on our website or something like that, is there any latitude, anywhere in legislation or anything? Have you seen anything?
No, not unless they change the statute. They need to perhaps adjust the statute.
Geez.
But, but so you mentioned the steps. So this is still the resolution of intent. There are two other documents in a bond issuance. There's the resolution authorizing issuance and then there's the resolution directing issuance. Our bond counsel says if you guys are ready to go, he could have the resolution authorizing issuance ready for October 15th, but that's just up to y'all. I understand the interest rates are good right now, but that's a business decision that y'all make.
Interest rates are fabulous and I would suggest that we do move forward with, with alacrity because we are going to be spending, you know, we move as fast as we can make this happen in a, in a reasonable way, fast and reasonable. We'd like to get this moving because, you know, we've been, we've been working on this for a while and it's something that we've been looking at for a very long time and I think it's time. If we're going to do this, we need to pull the trigger and make it happen, so.
So, so we need a number, right? As far as the amount y'all want to issue? Not necessarily right now, but before October 15th.
Just start at this minute, yes.
Yes. And it, and it can be issued in, in stages because we won't be spending it all at one time, so, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, and I'm guessing that none of that serves as, as consent items, so. All right, under planning, we have a request for a landscape waiver, discussion and consideration. And I am, I think that's, well, we'll just wait. I don't think that's probably appropriate, but since it is a waiver, we'll wait and take a look at it, so. The proposal for a comprehensive historic property reconnaissance survey. This is the historic preservation group looked at this and I think they have funding for this, do they not?
Yes.
Simon, there's a grant?
Yeah, $15,000. A monthly, about an 85, 180, will be paid by the state and the city is going to pay 65.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any reason not to put that one on consent for anybody? Okay. Discussion and consideration, the approval of Debbie Nettles to travel for the same organization, historic preservation for the Department of Archives and History training.
We have to do that for her, for the city to continue to have certified.
I believe that's correct. For us to continue to be certified, she has to, we have to have training, right? That's correct, yes. Yes. All right, and then we have plain stock it. Consideration of the August financial statements is usually something that we do put on consent, so. We also have an educational assistance program for Jamaica Smith. And then approval for Ms. Harden to travel to the master municipal clerk in committee session at Lake Tiaqata. Consent for those? Thank you. Fire department EMS authority for EMS or emergency services provider to promulgate policies for the district. Mr. Latimer?
Mayor, I talked to Chief Yarber on the way in and we recommend pulling this item. It's not quite ready yet. We can bring it back next time.
Okay, all right. We'll show that, show that scratched. Thank you. Then we have a 60-month run of a copier. And we have Mr. Clarence Parks to travel to Biloxi for Training Chiefs Conference. Issues with any of the travel? And actually, that doesn't have to come to the board. Okay, remember, it's, it's there, we'll just roll with it. Permission for WKMB, this is the, this is the pad for the future storage building for Station 5. And I think we had moved forward with that on, on bids or quotes. HR, we have a classification. Ms. Victoria Arnold is going to go to lead animal control officer and we now have a new animal control person. That would be Randy Johnson. So hiring Ms. Johnson for animal control officer. And then hiring certified police officers, which warms my heart. So we'll get four new, four new police officers. Under Parks, we have the facility use agreement. Mr. Latimer, you are good with that one?
I am.
Okay. And travel for, Gary, I'm going to let you put a little, put a little on this one because we've got a whole bunch of folks who are traveling down to the MRPA conference. Would you like to share just a little bit of that, please?
Sure, this is the Mississippi Recreation and Parks Association State Conference. We are hosting in, in next year, 2020. So we have, and several of the individuals there, particularly William, is leadership positions in the organization. We have two maintenance employees that are going down for a field maintenance workshop that they're doing related to the Gulfport fields, or Biloxi fields, excuse me. But yeah, this is a, it's a good training opportunity and definitely want to gear up as we'll have to take on this conference and host it next year, so. But myself and Trent are both staying behind, me not so willingly because I'm expecting the baby, but and Trent staying behind as well. So the shop will be manned, will be manned.
Well, and that was the thing, I want to make sure you said, because when you see four people gone from a department, but I wanted you to share that with the board, so.
And qualified people that are managed, that's my question.
Yes, okay. So consent with that one? And then we will have the presentation by LPK on their changes to the restaurants, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and they'll, they'll be coming forward with their design, their new design stuff. And I'm not consent for that, obviously. And then addition of the renovation and park deck for pool house to the existing agreement. And that is just whether or not y'all are willing to allow that contract to include the pool for consideration. So they're, they're separate, the design is one thing and then the contract is another. So Chris, and you've looked at the contract, are there no issues with that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any reason not to go ahead and put that one on consent?
Hold it off.
Hold it off, okay.
Let's see what they're presenting.
Okay. All right, the utilities department is travel, I think it's travel, travel and small travel.
Did we skip pulleys?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was DUI officers, yes, that was one of my, just sort of my mind went to consent, so. DUI officers to attend DUI training in Regent. And then we have travel for utilities. And then travel again for Madison Smith for certification. And then lowest and best quote for the backup server from Synergetics, which is IT related. And then we have Water Division, these are going to be the surplus items that I get to, well, we got transfer and then we've got some other surplus items. So I look forward to reading the VIN numbers on all of those. So consent items on those, please, if, unless someone objects.
1980 Chevy belt truck.
Yeah, I know. We, hey, you can't say we don't ring the use out of, out of our equipment. Lowest and best bid for circuit breakers. Terry, anything special about those other than it's that, it's what we got to do to upgrade our facility?
The utilities is these are all under what we anticipated on budget, but this is going into the substitution this one and we'll be energizing that by the next summer.
Okay, all right, thank you. Consent for those. Approval of renewal of the distribution insurance company property casualty insurance proposal. And then we scratched number eight. That one is not ready for primetime. And then the Task Center with Darver for the design of Green Oaks. And here's one of the things, and I'll talk about it just briefly, but at some point I want Terry to make a presentation when we get closer, but Pleasant Acres has gone very well. We've had, certainly there are always going to be hiccups and issues, which we had, but they've been handled expeditiously and quickly and I think the staff has done an extremely good job in staying in contact with these folks and to the point that they have moved into Green Oaks and it looks like Green Oaks is not going to take nearly the time that we had thought it was because the sewer is not going to need to be replaced, it's going to need, need more of a upgrade in some areas, but not wholesale replacement. Am I accurate?
Location, 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 we've got more line of data to follow, so.
So what we're looking at, and here's the real part I think is wonderful, is that, you know, Green Oaks can now only be two phases as opposed to like three and fours, what we were considering when we first started looking at this. So Rolling Hills will be next, so we may be looking at, you know, phase, phase one, phase two in Green Oaks, one year, two year, and then the third year we'll back up in